Pay the water bills of people who can't pay their water bills. And although there is a provision in the Washington State Constitution that allows use of our monies for charitable purposes on a limited scale, that wasn't what we were chartered to do. We were chartered to provide basic municipal services, and I think that we should focus our efforts and our monies on that. And once a year I bring this up, the rest of the time I simply vote against it because my colleagues have heard this all before. And I thank you for bearing with me to hear it once more for 2016. I will not prevail upon you to listen to it again until 2017. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You've got other counsel discussion? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to authorize the transfer of funds from the Utility Assistance Program Fund to the customer's utility account as approved by the Finance Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to Agenda Bill 8-16, an authorization authorizing the mayor to request to the state a redirection of legislative funds regarding the SR14 alternatives. Good evening, Trevor.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. I'm going to just give a brief introduction. We just wanted to get all orchestrated here, and then I'll turn it over to Patrick, who will walk you through. As you know, two weeks ago, we made a presentation on the opportunity to shift some funding. I'm sorry.
Dave Sims, can you hear this out there? The speaker system's okay?
As you know, two weeks ago, we made an initial presentation regarding an opportunity to transfer some funds from an existing state appropriation, $7.5 million for an overpass at 27th, a railroad overpass, that partially funds that $16.6 million project to some opportunities to solve some problems we have on the SR14 corridor, some safety issues that we have, as well as to promote economic development off of that corridor. That was a very extensive presentation. As you'll recall, there were a number of different questions that the council had, and they primarily focused around some more discussion about roundabouts on state routes and how they function, are they safe? And so Patrick heard that feedback, and working with the team here has prepared a presentation that drills down a little bit more and tries to talk about that a little bit more before we get to an action item that we have before you. And at the end of the presentation, it'll come back to me, and I'll walk through that action item and the next steps. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Patrick, and hopefully these are going to show up.
Okay. Counsel, your honor, thank you for inviting me back. I always like it here. Mount Hood was awesome coming in this day today. So what I've done, I've looked to find some similar roundabouts on similar roadways and volumes about the same and so forth that have been in the ground for a few years. So they've established their record of how well they're going to work or how well they're not going to work. And I've had the privilege of being a presenter at the last three international roundabout conferences. And in the last one, it was a, the presentation was similar to what we're going to look at here. And the roundabouts I'm going to show you, they're all in the northwest region of the DOT, because that's where my Red Middleton's located and where I have lots of friends that I can ask to get background information and such. And in the northwest region of the DOT, they have a policy that they will not allow you to put a traffic signal at a DOT intersection without first demonstrating that a roundabout's not appropriate. And so it's always in their toolbox and in their thinking. And so the first one I'm going to show you is at the intersection of State Routes 9 and 538. And you can see this little three-legged intersection. And what was occurring is that there's a small grocery store you can see on the right-hand side, and there's a developer that wanted to develop the area to the south of this intersection. But the problem they were having when he was applying, the developer was applying for an access permit to the state route, was that there were sight distance issues. And what would occur is that when they would hook into that leg on the left, you could see traffic that would be coming from the west, but you could not, you had a very poor sight distance to the traffic that was coming from the east. And so what they did, their solution they came up with, if you go to the next slide, is that they put this three-legged roundabout in, and now the developer, when he puts in his project and ties into that leg on the west side, he's only allowed to ride in, ride out, and because of that poor sight distance coming from that east approach. But that's perfectly fine now, because now the traffic coming out of the development makes that right turn, and if they want to go to the west, they just enter the roundabout, make a U-turn through the roundabout, and then head off to the west. And so that took care of the slight sight distance issues. And this little grocery store, once after this is put in, and this has been in for about nine years, it has just, it's thrived, because it's a very calming effect at the intersection. People aren't just blowing through as they used to, but they're coming in and slowing. So if we go to the next one, oh, thank you. And when you look at this, this intersection, their approach speeds are posted at 50 miles an hour, the 85th percentile's about 53, and the circulating speed through the roundabout is 17. So in a well-designed roundabout, we get all the motor vehicles down to bicycle speeds. Okay, next one, please. Yeah, the next three I'm going to show you are on State Route 92. And State Route 92 borders the north side of Lake Stevens. And Lake Stevens, they have two roundabouts on their city street networks. And the city's about 30,000, which I think is about twice the size of Washougal. And the first one here is at 92 and South Lake Cassidy Road. And what was the before condition, you can see it's a, just stop signs on the north and the south approaches. The Highway 92 is the east-west corridor. And during certain times of the day, it was quite difficult to make left turns, to get onto the, onto the Highway 92. So if you show us the roundabout now. So once the roundabout was put in, then say the motorist is coming from the south, when he's entering the circulating lane, is looking to the left for a gap in the circulating traffic. And that traffic, by the time it reaches that intersection, is slowed down to less, to about 20 miles an hour or less. And so now traffic only approaches from one direction, and they're approaching very slowly. And when you're entering a roundabout, it's not a new skill, it's not a new talent. It's the same thing that we do every time we pull out of the Safeway grocery store parking lot. We come up to the driveway entrance, we look to the left for a gap in the traffic, and if there's no gap, we stop. And if, when there is a gap, we turn right and we enter it, only instead of traffic approaching at a higher speed in front of Safeway's 35, or in this case, posted speed is 55, now that traffic is only, is approaching at a much slower speed. And so once you enter the roundabout in the circulating lane, all entering traffic yields to all circulating traffic. And so once you enter the circulating lane, you just proceed to your, to the exit you desire and proceed. And that was one thing, it was back in the 1960s, in the early 1960s, they had a great breakthrough in the UK with their roundabouts, because they finally decided to have a standardization on who yields to whom. And they determined that the most efficient means was to have all entering traffic yield to all circulating traffic. And once they did that, that's when they started having success, and they're having good performance from their roundabouts. And, you know, just across the water in France, a country that is a little bit smaller than if you combine Oregon, Washington, and Idaho, they watched what was going on in the UK with their roundabouts. And starting in the late 60s, the French started building roundabouts. And in their country, they have over 30,000 of them now. So they've really grasped hold of the concept and using it to their success. So if we go to the one, next one more, oops, I think you went backwards. One more.
He's being very finicky, my apologies. Not sure what's going on. Got to hit it harder, I guess. There we go.
Okay. This, I included this one to show you that what was the driving force for this particular roundabout. That area on, just adjacent to the north-south road is a school, and then the scrubbed-out area, the brown part, is a development that's going in, and they wanted to be able to get access to the state route on Highway 92. Okay, one more. And we can see there, the approach speeds were 55 miles an hour, or posted, 85th percentile's about 57, and circulating speed of 19 miles an hour through that roundabout. And I get these by going out with my radar gun and positioning myself where I can't, where I'm not seen by approaching traffic, otherwise I become a traffic calming device, and then collect the speed data. All right, let's go, go down, next one. Approximately a mile to the east is this next intersection on 113th Avenue Northeast. And it was the same situation, where people on the northbound approach during the peak hours were having great difficulty accessing the state route 92. And at both of these intersections, when there was difficulty making the lefts onto Highway 92, what that required them to do was to go south and go down into, through the Lake Stevens city roadway network, and then to the west over at a Highway 9. So this, putting these two roundabouts in also helped alleviate some of the congestion in, within the city itself. So if we go, look at the next slide, we can see the three-leg roundabout that was constructed there. And go one more, please. And so this shows what was laid just to the south of this roundabout. So it's quite a bedroom community there, and also you can see on the west side of the north-south road, there's another school. And this was the motive to give all of this traffic another means, a safe means to get onto the, to the state highway. And if you go one more, we'll have the speed data on that one. Again, posted 55, 85th percentile, 58, and circulating speed of 20 miles an hour. Okay? This is a picture that shows you both those roundabouts. You look up, all the way over to the left edge, you can see the four-leg, and then in the top right, you can see the three-leg roundabout. And this has allowed this community to have a means of a roadway network that can allow them to do more development in that green space should they desire to. Before this, that really wasn't an option because of all of the traffic, most of that traffic having to go down through the city's roadway network in order to get to a state highway. Go to the left. Now this is one that I actually showed you two weeks ago. It's on the same highway farther, farther to the east, and we're getting close to the city of Grant, little town of Granite Falls. And Granite Falls to the northeast, they have three gravel pits. And when all those gravel pits are in operation, they average three dump trucks pulling their trailers going through their little town every minute, averaging every 20 seconds. And it was a most unpleasant experience. If, when you're on the sidewalk, the town literally just stunk of diesel exhaust, and you couldn't stand on the corner or on the sidewalk and have a conversation with all the trucks stopping at a stop sign and then gearing up again. So if you look to see what the roundabout looks like, here's the one on Highway 92. And this allowed the little town to have all of that heavy vehicle traffic bypassing the town, and giving them a much civil, more civil and pleasant community to live in. And if you go one more slide, please, you'll see the post, the speeds again, posted in the 85th percentile and the circulating speed. And this is a picture of the bypass roundabout we were just looking at, in the lower left. And then you'll see a four-leg roundabout just to the north of it. And as the road wraps up to the north and then towards the east in the upper right corner, you see a five-leg roundabout. And again, a school right in the vicinity. And these three, these last three roundabouts showing that there are no issues or no, well, the roundabouts have shown them to have such a stellar safety record that when you get the motor vehicles to bicycle speeds, having them adjacent to schools has not been an issue at all. And I, on the Kansas State Roundabout List serve, they put together a list of roundabouts near schools, and it just grows and grows as we go on. And one thing, too, of these four roundabouts I've shown you, I requested collision data from the state. In our state, it's very handy that everybody's collision data goes to the DOT, and they use it in their data, they compile it in their database. Takes a couple of weeks or more to get the responses from them, but that's pretty good, I think. And at each of these intersections, when you looked at before the roundabout was constructed and after the roundabout instructions, there have been no peaks, no spikes in collisions. And the severity has even gone down, because, again, bicycle speed collisions are very, are minor. And when you have people entering the roundabout and circulating the roundabout, if you have someone that does not yield properly, both those vehicles are pointed nearly the same direction. So it's more of a side swipe rather than a T-bone or that type of impact. Let's go on one more, please. This is the roundabout on State Route 9, the intersection of Quarry Road, and as you're getting quite close to the city of Granite Falls, or the town, rather, and they have a nice sign there that says, you know, gateway to the Mountain Loop Road. And they've chosen to make this a nice gateway to their, to their community. If you go one more, you can see that the city of Monroe has done the same thing, roundabout on the state interchange there that takes you into the city of Monroe. And also, often with, when you're approaching a roundabout, it's opportunity for local business to give their information. And here's an example, it's on the roundabout that's going into this, that's approaching Granite Falls, where the Buzzian Steakhouse has chosen to put their sign, and the arrow showing that, you know, to enter the roundabout and continue around and exit here left. So with this, I am going to stop and let David just speak to these other couple of slides, and I'll be available for questions.
Patrick, could you just talk about why we chose these roundabouts, too? We talked about why we chose these particular roundabouts to show the council in terms of volume and...
Oh, okay. 10 years ago, back in 2006, I was looking to see a possibility, looking to the possibility of having roundabouts on Highway 14. And there were basically two scenarios that were asked to look at, and this was one where you have the two end roundabouts at 15th and 32nd, and then one in the center as well, approximately 27th, that came down to the intersection at Addy Road. And this was a means of giving access, the one at 32nd, that mitigates the issues that have motivated the state to make that ride in, ride outs on all of the north and south approaches.
Patrick, I was going to talk more about the similarity between the this volumes and the roundabouts that you've chosen.
Oh, okay. Thank you. No, that's quite all right. Rein me in any time. I'm here for you. So when you look at this corridor, the ones that I showed you, those four, it is approximately the same average daily traffics, and likewise, these are 55 mile an hour approaches. And when I took, I looked at my old data from 10 years ago, that the approach speeds indeed were, the 85th percentile's about 50, 57, 58 miles an hour, which is typical for a 55 mile an hour posted speed. So this, these were the similarities I was looking for when I was picking roundabouts to present to you in this case study. I get it right now? All right, I can do that.
And then, Patrick, one other thing, if you could just comment, there was some question that had come up over the past couple of weeks about queuing issues that might occur. As we all know, when there's a train at 32nd and Evergreen, or the light there is red at PM peak, particularly eastbound traffic on the state route, sometimes queues up in that left-hand turnpocket waiting to get north on 32nd because it's backed up there. And so there's a period of time during the day where that would happen. And your comments about what would be different or not different with a roundabout at 32nd.
Well, was there also a case of occasional queuing on 15th as well?
That can come up. I think it's much more pronounced at 32nd, but there's a light on 15th northbound at A.
Okay.
It doesn't get blocked by trains, and it's a shorter ti, cycle, is that the term? Shorter cycle. However, it could happen, but 32nd's really where that's the main issue.
The issue of northbound traffic queuing back down to the, to the state route 14, it's not specifically a roundabout question, because it's an issue you're going to have to deal with whatever you do have there, whether it's a roundabout, or a traffic signal, or you put a four-way stop up there, you're going to, you'd have to deal with that same issue. If it went on a roadway where it's only the traffic signal that's creating this queue, it's a pretty straightforward way of being able to assist it and mitigate that. So I've done a lot of traffic signal design as well. And what you do is you install what's called a queuing loop, and that's another, just a loop and detector loop in the roadway, and you put it back at a distance that the queue gets, goes, in this case, that far south, and it reaches that loop, then that tells a traffic signal, we don't want this queue to get any longer, and it'll get extra green time to that northbound movement and help flush that out. However, when you have a situation where the traffic's, you know, that kind of mitigates an issue with a traffic signal at 37, 32nd, but it certainly doesn't mitigate when you have a train, especially a long train that queues back. So one of the, one of the things I believe is already being looked at is having an advisory sign that on the, on the eastbound, that would be positioned west of 15th. So when you are experiencing, when that queue gets back to a certain point, again, there can be a detector loop put there that would alert traffic of that 32nd is closed right now, and, you know, for a message to the effect of northbound movements use 15th. That is a response to the queue, it doesn't get rid of the queue. And then we do, I have done roundabouts that do have a bypass lane for through movement. Whether it be appropriate here, I couldn't tell you without, you know, doing more, doing some more number crunching and analysis. And also, we have, when you have the train causing that queue to come back, if you have the roundabout, if you have a single lane roundabout, then you've lost that eastbound left turnpocket that you have right now, that some of that overflow traffic can queue into. So in that case, yes, you may have a situation where if people are persistent, that they want to wait for the train even on Highway 14, that you would have a queuing back through your roundabout and cause a blockage there. If you had a situation where you have two eastbound lanes through your roundabout, then you can have some queuing in the left lane and the right through lane would, could remain open. Is that something I would care to see? No, I'd not see that either. I think that it would have to, we need to look at the situation at the intersection, and we can be more creative to try to find out an issue of getting rid of the queue rather than different ways to live with the queue. And so I don't have a silver bullet for you today, unfortunately.
Thank you, Patrick. So that would be part of the design effort.
Yes.
And the options analysis. So we just want, now I wanted to, if you want to just stay there in case there's questions, we have just a couple more slides, counsel, and then we could turn it over for questions. But these are just reminders from the last session, and for everyone's information, please understand, these are concepts and options. This is not a finalized design that says this is what we're going to do. But you can see from this, and this is something that would look familiar to folks who were following this process 10 or more years ago, roundabout at 15th, a roundabout at River, excuse me, at 32nd, and then a pair of roundabouts in the vicinity of 27th to try to provide access north and south in the vicinity of an existing grade separation there. You have a grade separation, we'd want to try to take advantage of that at some point, but there's no way to get on the 27th off of the state route at this point. So this introduces a way to do that. As you can imagine, there's quite a bit of construction of the roadway between those two roundabouts on private property, and it's very important to work with that private property owner about what kind of roadway system they'd like on their property. And this may or may not be a preferred alternative at this point, until there's some further alternatives analysis that could be looked at. So again, this is just one concept to show. The 15th and 32nd locations are a little bit more fixed in terms of their intersections are there, you need to, if you're going to do roundabouts, that's where you would do the roundabouts, because the intersections are there, that's where the legs of the roundabout would be. So the, the part that's more conceptual is the middle part around 27th. Another option, again, it's a concept, it looks the same as the last one, except you'll notice the absence of those two roundabouts in the vicinity of 27th, and it's hard to see there, but you can see on the west side of the bridge on the state route at 27th, you can see a couple of ramps there. So basically, that's a right-off ramp and a right-on ramp, and that gets you on and off the state route. This is a concept that's been added around in the community for a long time as well. It's just to show that there's, you know, some different iterations of the overall corridor solution that could be explored. Going back to this one, there, those roundabouts could be relocated, they don't have to be exactly where they are, that's just one concept that's out there. So to kind of pull it back and talk about the next steps, at the end of this session and at the end of the public comment portion of this and council questions and deliberation, there's going to be a request that's in front of you to authorize the mayor to advocate at the legislature this session to switch the funding from the 27th Street overpass to the corridor. In shifting that funding, you don't specify precisely exactly every engineering parameter in that design, but that it would be an alternative solution, including leveraging roundabouts to some extent, it's kind of understood because of the dollar amounts involved. So if that is the council's action at the end of this meeting, the next steps would be immediately to work with the legislature to shift the appropriated funding from the overpass project to the state route. And in fact, we preliminarily started that effort, because they've been in session for a couple of weeks. And so right before the session started, we just gave them a heads-up that we were kicking the tires on an alternative here, so we could get their initial feedback, and they said that this is something that they could try to work with us on, that it's something that they could do. It's not new money per se. And then once, once that was successful in this short session, then we'd begin right away. This is a project that would be ready to go. As we discussed last time, we don't have, the $7.5 million does not necessarily construct all of this if this was the preferred option per se. It definitely doesn't have enough to fund all of that. We'd have to... We'd have to look at appropriate phasing. However, the roundabouts that bookend this corridor, this part of the corridor at 15th and 32nd could be constructed, and there'd be some additional funding there, perhaps for some alternatives analysis in the vicinity of 27th, so that a second phase could help us understand what would be most appropriate there, working with the property owners. We mentioned last time as well that we're looking at some state planning grant funding for economic development to look at the properties to the north of the state route in this area. There's a lot of greenfield there. Two specific property owners that own the bulk of that property. Part of our downtown visioning and bullishness for the downtown is to move into these areas and start to look at what would happen there. And this is an opportunity to coincidentally plan access from the state route through an alternatives analysis with planning for economic development on the north side. We are, are all aware of the port's strategic planning that's already been undertaken, and they have a robust plan on the south side for their Steigerwald Commerce Center, as well as other portions of their holdings here in Washougal. So it's a really great opportunity, if you would, to leverage the existing state appropriation. And also just to remind all of us as we're considering this, the $7.5 million that's appropriated to the overpass is inadequate to fund that overpass. We need basically nine more million dollars, and we do not know where that funding will come from. We can ask the legislature to make additional appropriation this short session, but it is very uncertain as to whether or not there will be any. And so it's the staff's and the administration's perspective that this alternative of shifting the funding is prudent, given that fact, because we can deliver some meaningful solutions to issues that we face on the state route soon, over the next couple of biennia, because the funding exists, to deliver meaningful, excuse me, a meaningful phase to the project. That doesn't mean we don't need that crossing. We still need that crossing, and even in this session, we would continue to advocate for that. But in terms of leveraging the funding that's available, we could get something done as opposed to potentially not getting the extra $9 million and having to turn back the $7.5 million, and then we haven't accomplished anything, which would be unfortunate for sure. So that was kind of that phasing conversation. This isn't a formal public hearing, however, you did ask for us to kind of have an informal public hearing, so I believe the mayor's planning to, if, after any questions that the council has for the team here on, on this particular proposal, to hear from constituents that might be here that want to share their thoughts about this with you. Counsel, Paul?
When you did the presentation two weeks ago to workshop, there was a slide in there about, and I'm just off the top of my head, help me out here, roundabouts on state roads over 10 years, was it? Want you, the, and what the, how the accidents and injuries had changed on that?
Oh.
Could you recite that for us?
Well, what it, what it was showing, actually, it wasn't just roundabouts on state routes, it was roundabouts in general where the FHWA had done a study to look at intersections where, where previously roundabouts, or excuse me, previously traffic signals, all-way stops, two-way stops, and so forth, that had been converted to roundabouts. And what they, what the overall result was, is that when, after this conversion had taken place, and the roundabout would have been functioning for some time to get some meaningful data, that the overall collisions, I remember right, were, were reduced by one-third, and that the injury collisions were in reduced by three-quarters, 75% less. And that again comes down to, two main contributors are the, are the low speeds, and the fact that no one makes left turns at a roundabout per se. And so the, you don't, all of the, the T-bones are mitigated, the head-on intersections are mitigated, and all those injury, you know, high injury type collisions are mitigated. Answer your question?
Yeah, so to summarize then, intersections that used to be stop signs, four-way or two-way, or traffic lights, when replaced by roundabouts, the total number of accidents went down by one-third.
Yes, sir.
And the total number of injuries went down by three-quarters.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other initial questions that council has?
If I understand it correctly, option B includes full diamond intersection, on-ramps and off-ramps at 27th, 1 to 14?
It shows the half-diamond, just.
Half-diamond, okay.
Half-diamond.
Coming from the north side?
The north side, yes, sir.
Okay. And the, the off-ramp coming from, so there would be no off-ramp coming from the west?
There's, correct.
Okay.
That, that's what that's showing.
Now, if you're westbound, so here's the, here's the image, if you're west, yeah, that's right, no off, if you're westbound, you cannot, you would not be able to get off on 27th.
And when we were.
If you're westbound?
If you're westbound. If you're coming from the west, eastbound, you would be able to exit. So it's basically right off and right on.
Yep.
Okay, good.
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's, I think, a valuable consideration here.
Certainly.
What that does is it adds access and egress to and from Highway 14, in addition to the access and egress that we have from 32nd and Washougal River Road now. So of, of all the, the options, this one appeals to me the most, simply because it offers additional off, access and egress.
Yeah.
Would the $7.5 million pay for that?
My understanding is that it does not, but Patrick can elaborate.
Well, the, the challenge, the big challenge with, with those, that half-diamond interchange is on the south side of the highway, there's not much room between state route 14 and that, that water feature. And so we have to fit that, that ramp between those two, those two, well, the highway and the water feature. And as a result, it's a big wall. You have to build a very big wall that's expensive. And so, yes, I, I personally, I like that feature because of the access, but the, we have to weigh that against the expense that it would do it, and know that $7.5 million would not pay for that half-diamond interchange.
Okay, thank you.
There was another aspect to that, Patrick. I recall you mentioning to us, just as the staff, recently, if you're, if you were south of the state route on 27th, heading north, and then you wanted to make a left there to get on the westbound on-ramp, the space at 27th to accommodate a left-hand turnpocket there is compromised, and it might mean some work on the existing overpass?
Well, I don't know, you can see that those, those, when you bring down those, the off-ramp and looking at, looking at the off-ramp and the on-ramp, they're very close. And so there's not much left, room to make a left turnpocket between them. But there have been times where I've seen on a, on a half-diamond interchange with, that both of them were close, that you would extend that left turnpocket to actually go south, go to the south side as well of, of the interchange. It, this is one of the things where you have to kind of get into the details of it, because I, I don't have, I, I've not seen the, the traffic volumes that we have on 27th now to see how the, and how much traffic we would anticipate attracting to it if we put the diamond interchange in. And it's, it's, it's a wonderful function, it's a challenging design.
And the benefit I see to it is the trucks coming out of the port, but that's going to make it difficult to make that left turn.
Yeah, it could be, yes.
For the trucks. Okay, thank you.
It could be, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, before any other questions, I failed to mention that one of the key stakeholders that we talked to about this concept before we talked with you was our partners at the port. And before our last work session, I was able to speak with the executive director, and then last week, the port commission, I gave them a brief presentation on, on the concept, showed them this, and option A. And I believe at your, at your place, you have a letter from Executive Director Rip, or maybe it's over here with Rose. I'll just, suffice it to say that the port commission is in support of the concept of redirecting the funding from the overpass to the corridor. I don't want to speak for them, but they talked a lot about 32nd Street and the issues that they have there. Their trucks can't make a left out of there, and you can't get through, straight through. It's very circuitous, and so that's very advantageous for them to deliver this solution at 32nd. They're also very, looking forward very much to options analysis and hopefully a future phase two in the vicinity of 27th, because certainly that's another main route in the vicinity of their industrial park there. So I know we have some representatives from the port here, if you want to hear from them at some point, they're here to, to talk about their perspective on this, but I wanted to share that with you, I'd forgotten about. And we had also, and I shared this last week, talked to the, the two property owners that own most of that vacant undeveloped land, if not all of that vacant undeveloped land, to the north of the 14 and south of Main Street, also very strongly in support of the general concept of moving the funding from the overpass to the state route, and particularly initially phasing in the 32nd and 15th roundabouts, and exploring options in the vicinity of 27th. Jennifer?
Yes, maybe I missed this during our conversation, but do we know the total estimated costs for both of the primary roundabouts that we're talking about, the one at 15th and the one at 32nd?
We don't have final estimates. We have preliminary estimates that Patrick prepared for us, and the two of them together are about $6 million. We've heard some tell us they might not be quite as much as that, and so it just depends on how we design those. There's some advocacy, I'm sure that you will hear at some point through this process, about making these roundabouts very special in terms of their gateway feel, if you would. You saw some photos that Patrick provided where communities have really leveraged that. And the more you do with that, certainly the more that that can add to the cost. It depends on what you're going to do. If it's just asphalt and concrete and nothing else, you know, maybe it's a little less expensive, how wide, you know, there's a lot of design details that go into it. But I think Patrick was pretty conservative, there's pretty robust roundabouts, $6 million delivers the two. That leaves us a million and a half for options and alternatives analysis in the vicinity of 27th. Michelle?
I was just curious, are there any studies on environmental benefits, if there are any, in regards to exhaust versus, that you've seen study-wise?
I, yes. And matter of fact, some of the software we use for roundabout capacity analysis actually calculates, you know, discharge from vehicles. And vehicles put out their, the greatest amount of pollutants when they're idling. And when we do traffic signals, which I've designed many, whenever we have vehicles idling, that's the greatest amount of exhaust. And also with a roundabout, we come up to, to the roundabout, and you just approach, look to your left for a gap in circulating traffic, and sooner one presents itself, you take it. And so there's not nearly as many vehicles stopped. And because, and also because we don't have as many vehicles stopped, we don't have to store as many vehicles as we do with a traffic signal. And building lanes, you know, two-through lanes instead of one to, in order to, to store the vehicles when they're stopped, because then environmentally what happens then, we have much more impervious area. And then, so we, all that water that comes off that impervious area, we have to collect it, we have to clean it, purify it, and we have to store it, to some degree, provide some kind of storage, and then release it into the, the stormwater system. So there, there is the, the air issue, and there's also the issue of dealing with stormwater that both would come under an environmental.
Are there any grants associated with that environmentally for doing that?
That I don't know. Let me ask that question of some other folk.
There, there's some potential funding around the air quality through the RTC, it's called CMAC. I forget what the C and the M stand for, but AQ is air quality.
Congestion management.
Congestion management, air quality. So I don't know how much, though. So every little bit helps, though.
I have two questions. So what do you think the circulating speed is going to be through these traffic circles? And are there pedestrian crossing features being built into them?
Okay. First of all, let me answer three questions. These are roundabouts, not traffic circles. Traffic circles we put in neighborhoods to calm the traffic and discourage people from cutting through the, the neighborhood. And the, the speeds through these, I would expect not to be in a, at the highest, the circulating speed would be about 22 miles an hour. And the key in round, the heart and soul of roundabouts design is speed control. When you get the vehicles entering at the speed you want them, and you get them, the vehicle pointed into the throat of the circulating lane, great things happen. And part of the design, when, once you, you do your design, one of the safety checks you do is you check the, the speed, differential speeds from conflict, and all the conflicting movements. You, you check to see what the, compare the entering speed to the circulating speed. And by FHWA standards, that can be no more than 12 miles an hour. Myself and the designers I work with, we worked very hard to get that down to six to eight miles an hour. So you can see where there's a, that is one of the big contributors to, to low severity when there is a collision. And so, and your second question was, sir?
Where there's going to be pedestrian features.
Oh, pedestrian features. Well, in these layouts you're looking at right now, I don't recall that we did put pedestrian features on there. One thing, at the 15th, you have that marvelous tunnel that should, should attract pedestrians. Now down at 32nd, maybe not, you know, there may be some. And if that be the case, we can certainly incorporate pedestrian features. And what occurs with the pedestrian, when the pedestrian is, is crossing a signalized intersection, say the intersection you have at 15th, there, there are, if I remember right, there, let's see, from, looking from the north side, there's an acceleration lane, there's a through lane, left turn lane, and then another through lane. So we're looking four lanes, something 50 to 55 foot crossing there. And so if we had a pedestrian accommodations at that traffic signal, when the pedestrians hits that, that nice button, we have to make sure that they get a green, they get a walk phases that's, that's long enough, a phase to get from, you know, crossing that big wall, that 50, 55 feet. And so that really cuts down also the efficiency on the, on the motor vehicle traffic. Now with a, with a roundabout, with a single lane roundabout, like I've been showing you, the pedestrian crossings are only about 14 feet. And each of those, those splitter islands that we use to, to direct and get the speed control that we want, want from the motorists, each one, they, they have a refuge area there. And that refuge area is a minimum of six feet, six feet wide, and that number comes from a person pushing a wheelchair, that that's enough room to accommodate them. So that, and, and besides that, you always look to see, well, who your users are at a, at a roundabout, who might be using that. We had one case that where the roundabout was, had an equestrian trail going through it, going through. So when we made the crossing that was going to, to facilitate the horses, well, nose to exhaust on a horse, six feet's not enough room. So you make that appropriate. So when the, when the pedestrian first is, is looking for traffic in only one direction, if they are, when they're crossing, say they're first crossing the exit of the roundabout, they're looking to their left, and they're looking at that traffic that's coming in that circulating speed, so it's approaching at a slower speed. Reach the. speed, so it's approaching at a slower speed, reach the refuge area, and then at that point, they are looking, in this case, to the right, again, only one direction at a time, for the approaching motor vehicle. And also by the time the motorist gets down to where the pedestrian crossing is, that all that, several elements to primarily that geometry has slowed them down considerably by the time they get there. And also notice at roundabouts, that the pedestrian crossing is not up next to the circulating lane. It's at least one car length back from the circulating lane. Because we want, so what we're doing is we are segregating the pedestrian conflict points from the circulating lane conflict points. Because what occurs most of the time is that vehicles at traffic signals, that when they hit pedestrians, it's very, very rare that somebody blows through a green light and hits a pedestrian crossing on a perpendicular crosswalk. Where the pedestrians get hit is when there's a motor vehicle that's taking, say, a right on red. And I know two fatalities in Olympia where a pedestrian is, Mr. Snyder's sitting on, standing on the corner on the right front fender of the motor vehicle, the motorist is waiting to make a right on red, and so his, the driver's attention is to the left. And so, when that gap came up and the, that gap reached the intersection, well, it turned out the gap reached the intersection at the same moment the traffic light turns green. But the motorist, when you watch people when they enter a roundabout, or you watch some motorists is making a right on red, the head is coming around as the vehicle is moving. The head doesn't come around, then the vehicle moves. It doesn't work that way. So, the motorist is making the right turn, Mr. Snyder, the pedestrian, does not look over his left shoulder to see what's going on there, and there's the collision, and he's, and the pedestrian is killed. The other one is, when you're sitting in a permitted left turn, you're in that left turn pocket or a two-way left turn lane, and you're waiting to make a left, and you know that, that the longer you're waiting for that gap to reach you, your gap acceptance, it starts diminishing, and it gets smaller and smaller. And then finally, there's a gap that comes up and says, okay, I'm taking this one. And you're timing it. And the gap, that smaller gap comes up, and it's reaching you, and it's getting to you, and so you're rolling up, and you're, so you can make that left turn in that gap. Before you make that actual turn, you make a conscious decision to look at that crosswalk that you're about to go across, to see if there's a pedestrian, a bicycle, a stroller, or anything that's crossing that. And that's where the pedestrians get, the majority of them get killed. The roundabout, all the pedestrian crossings are perpendicular to the motor vehicle traffic, and the pedestrian crossing is back from the circulating lane. So, the motorist comes up, he deals with the pedestrian crossing first. When the motorist gets up to the circulating lane and is looking to the left for a gap in the circulating traffic, there are no pedestrians on his right front fender. They're all, they're behind him. And so, that's another reason that the pedestrians have a safer condition than typically at the traffic, traffic signals. That was a long answer to a short question. Thank you.
But out of that, we did get gap acceptance and nose to exhaust on a horse.
Yes.
So, we got some. Brent?
I have some hope that we might be able to widen 14 at least to 32nd and maybe beyond. What does this do to that possibility as far as using a roundabout? Is there any design issues or?
Widening to four lanes?
Right.
Okay. Well, first of all, most of your delays on roadway networks are at the intersection. That's where the majority of the delays are. And we have, I have a lovely picture to illustrate this well, up in Bellingham, right next to Watcom Community College. There are two roundabouts on Lundin Parkway. And one is a gateway to the campus, and the school did a lovely job of decorating the landscaping there. And what has happened, the city was planning to put two traffic signals in. And if they had put those traffic signals, the three-lane cross section between them was having, would have to go to a five-lane cross section because, for two reasons, for the capacity, you need to store the vehicles you stocked, and then also, you just, well, that's the number one reason, to store the vehicles you stocked. Now, if, so what we have on that corridor, we have two roundabouts that, on the north-south portion of it, where the bulk of the traffic is, the, when you go through the roundabout, there are two lanes each direction, two northbound lanes, two southbound lanes. But what that allows us to do, since we're not stopping nearly the number of vehicles, we don't have to store them on top of pavement, we're, they're allowed to keep that connector between the two roundabouts at a three-lane cross section. And what I'm leading up to is that, in my lifetime, if we have roundabouts on this corridor, and if the traffic grows to a point where we want two eastbound lanes and two westbound lanes, you don't need, in my lifetime, you will never need to widen that to a four-lane cross section. You would come up and you'd get to a certain point, as you're approaching the roundabout, flare it to two lanes, the two lanes say westbound, and then after they exit the roundabout, then, then it tapers back down to one lane again. So, and there's a huge saving in that as well. When you look at the one point where we have the bridge, we don't need to ever construct a second bridge in my lifetime.
So, you think it would actually make the widening to four lanes more viable?
There's no need to it. There's no need to.
To four lanes?
No, no, sir. There's no need, because the delay's at the intersection, and when we have two east-
I'm talking about the four lane, it would be, I'm talking about the four lanes on the main road, not on the roundabout itself.
Correct. But if we have the four lanes going east and west, going through the roundabout, there's no need to build the four lanes between them. Because the traffic will just come in, they'll flare into the two lanes through the roundabout, and then they taper back together. And there, so that's, it's called large nodes, small connectors. And it, that saves a great deal when it comes to the, dealing with the stormwater issues. So, you know, after I'm gone, if there's a need to do that, you certainly, you know, you can't do that, but I don't foresee it myself. Because going to the, especially, you go from that, move from 32nd to the east, what trip generators do we have out there? I love, as soon as I get past 45th on my motorcycle, I love riding that road.
Unless 27th becomes a generator?
Yeah. And so, yeah, there's some there, but, you know, I don't foresee that we'd ever reach a point where we would need, have, need the capacity between the two, between the intersections to go to a four-lane cross section. And we've designed many roundabouts now, that when we determine that we can, a single lane roundabout will function for a number of years, but we design them in the manner so if, on a, say in this case, on an east-west movement, that if we later want to have, we need the capacity for four lanes, we design the single lane in a manner so that it facilitates that, and so you're not tearing out the whole thing and starting over. It's designed with that in mind. And so, what we do is we initially lay out the multi-lane roundabout and get the speed control we want, and then we kind of back the single lane out of it to do that. Did I answer your question?
You did.
David?
Mr. Mayor, can we move to the public comment?
We can. I wanted to make sure, Bart, did you have anything that you want to add to this from DOT's perspective?
Thank you, Mayor and Council for the citizens in the crowd. My name's Bart Gernard, I'm the Assistant Regional Administrator for Engineering of Wachshott. Support 100% of what Patrick just said. We have, actually have modeled it. You really only need two lanes. East of 15th is even questionable. Coming up to 15th, whether or not you need two through lanes, one through lane each direction, except for you have signals, therefore you have to have Q, slows down traffic flow, slows down, you know, creates backups, et cetera. So, you can get them off, like ramps, one-lane ramps, off-ramps, et cetera, or roundabouts, either one would address it, and you would only need to have one lane in each direction. And basically everything else they said, agree 100% with. Unless you have questions, I'll be here in the back any time.
Can you, Bart, can you take a crystal ball and talk anything about future funding? I know some of the folks that I've talked to and that have conversed back and forth, or, you know, a lot of them just ask, why can't we just put in interchanges completely and forget this? You don't do these on a highway. Why are we doing this?
You know, us engineers would love to build, you know, the freeway extension, extend it all the way over. The projects we just finished, around $50 million, extending up across the West Campus Loop, building the Split Diamond Interchange at Second and at Union. To extend that all the way here to build something similar, probably close to $100 million. We just got a 16-year transportation package, about $16 billion, covering all modes. It's going to be probably close to 16 years, at least a dozen years historically, before the legislature funds another transportation package. That's a long time to wait, and even if you waited that long, when that time comes, the likelihood of getting that type of money again for this location, compared to all the other needs in the region and across the state, is highly unlikely. We clearly all know that we need to have additional lanes on SR14 from 164th to I-205. 10 or 15 years from now, we'll need it from 192nd to 205. We'll need, we need extra lanes up and down I-205 between Mill Plain, 500, and the Patton. We need to eliminate some signals at 42nd and 54th on Highway 500, kind of do what we've been doing over the last several, last two decades, eliminating the existing signals at Adreson, at Thurston Way, at 112th, at St. John's just recently. All those projects cost money. And the way it looks, based on our historic revenue generation, there's very little chance to get 50 million, let alone 100 million to extend the freeway out to 32nd. That was our long-term concept, but fiscal realities that we're facing today have changed, and we just clearly can't fund it. So, what we're looking for at, as a department, and the legislature has directed us to do, is look at a thing called practical solutions. Is there a lower-cost way to address the issues, not the Cadillac, but a lower-cost way to address the issues for today and in the near future, not out 20 or 30 years? Roundabouts seem to be one way to do that. It's a lot lower cost, about 10% lower cost to bring a freeway through here. In addition, as I just mentioned, the need to really extend four lanes all the way out to 32nd isn't justified, except for you have signals. So, if we can eliminate the signals by doing other things, then we eliminate that need, which is a big cost. As we extend the four lanes out, we also, as mentioned, have to add water treatment facilities for all that extra impervious, and the existing, when we do the widening, and we'll have to look at putting noise walls up and down. From 164th to I-205, widening that section, it's going to cost just as much money to add the noise walls and the water treatment facilities, as it will to add the extra one lane and, or two lanes in each direction.
Paul?
Two quick questions. You mentioned the transportation package. Off the top of your head, how much of that total package goes into Clark County?
I cover seven counties. I can't recall.
No, into Clark?
I know, I can't recall. I cover seven counties. I don't remember the, I can get you that split, but I-
How about your seven, how about your region, then?
Laurie, you know, I don't know that one either. It's covered, it's covered over, so we have some projects out, like 179th doesn't start for a number of years. I have a new interchange, we have a new interchange on I-5. In North Lewis County, it's $50 million. That doesn't start until 2025. I personally plan on being retired by then, so I'm not, I don't pay attention, I don't include those in what I'm looking at today, so I'm sorry I can't ask. Be glad to give you those numbers, but I'm sorry I can't.
No, I just, for the, for the people assembled, I serve on the Regional Transportation Council, and my memory is that the total amount of money into Clark County is less than 400 The total amount into Clark County is less than 400 million. The likelihood that we're going to get 25% of the total funds into Clark County to do our little piece of SR14 is, how should I say, vanishingly small? It's just not going to happen.
And under today's concept, again, of practical solutions, the legislature has endorsed, and it actually has directed the department to do, and as we're moving forward, working with the different communities on these different projects, we're really looking to stretch that dollar as far as we can. Even though in some areas they've maybe given, you know, identified 20 or 30 million dollars for a solution, we're trying to look with them to get a lower-cost solution, with the idea, in the bill, in the House bill that was just passed, the Senate, and Senate bill too, there's a caveat, this is, any of those fundings that we save is going to be put into a kitty in 2024, and in 2024, the legislature will decide what additional projects to fund, how to utilize that money. Well, now, we can't guarantee that any of our local legislators will be here in 2024, et cetera. But the idea is, we have all these other needs. I already mentioned, you know, the 14, and 205, and 500, et cetera. We have all these other needs that we like to stretch our dollar, and so we don't have to ask for additional gas tax, increase the gas tax to the citizens of the state, stretch that dollar as far as we can. And because this really isn't needed for traffic volumes per se, the four-laning out, it's more of a, again, Cadillac, that if someone else was to fund it, we'd probably accept it, but other than that, we're trying to stretch our dollar, so we probably wouldn't even support going forward to four lanes, even if they funded it. Because that money is going to be, wouldn't be allowed, available to be used someplace else.
And then, one other thing, two weeks ago, when we had our workshop, there was a question that was raised about the possibility of running a Jersey barrier down SR14. Could you briefly summarize your thoughts on that?
We, I've just put a barrier down, 14, coming up to, whatever, 6th, we had somewhere around 6th. Clearly, we did that for safety reasons. We looked at doing it again, at the suggestion of the mayor, but we actually were in process of analyzing that last year. We wanted to put it, as we just paved out here recently, we wanted to do as part of that project. We analyzed the cost to actually widen. To put barrier down the middle, you have to actually have a shy distance, area in the middle, can't have cars driving at one foot or six inches away from it. So, we actually had to widen the roadway. The shoulders aren't adequate depth. If you shifted traffic off on the shoulders a little bit to get the extra room in the median for the barrier, then the shoulders are going to fall apart, so we have to go out and dig out those shoulders. Well, some places are eight feet wide, so you have to dig down, remove eight feet of pavement. That's like adding another lane. It's real, it gets to be real expensive, you have to treat extra stormwater, et cetera. At the end, the summary is, it doesn't, what we call benefit cost, it doesn't compare to, it's, it doesn't compete very well with other safety improvement projects elsewhere in the region. We'd love to have done it, we try to do it, so in lieu of that, what we did is put rumble strips out there and moved the stripes out about a foot, foot and a half, as a temporary interim solution. Something like the roundabouts, in all likelihood, will slow down traffic, agree with Patrick 100%, I don't have the exact numbers, but clearly roundabouts are much safer than signalized intersections for all the reasons he mentioned. We have study after study that shows that. The traffic will slow down overall, so the, like, the overall safety of the quarter will improve. One of the things you didn't mention, one of our tools in our toolbox, that we didn't have 10 years ago, when we were having this discussion, I was here 10 years ago with council, only a couple of you are left, any. One of the tools we didn't have then, that we have now, are, on these high-speed roundabouts, on the approaching legs, as you approach from the west to the 15th Street, as you approach from the east, coming from the gorge, you approach 32nd. What we may do is put out one of those little radar guns, but a permanently mounted one, off on the shoulder, and have, so you can see the speed that you're entering, we've seen these all around, they have them everywhere. But right before that is the speed you're supposed to enter them in. So, you have the warning speed, and I don't know what it would be, maybe 25 or 30, whatever it is, and then you can see your actual speed. And I don't know about you, but that actually gets my attention, and I realize I better start slowing down. So, the interim, when we're first set these up, and especially on the ends, we need to get the driver's attention. If you've been driving 30 miles from the gorge coming in, you know, you may or may not be prepared for a roundabout, even though we'll have advanced signs. If you're driving on the freeway, coming from Vancouver into it, something similar, you know, you're driving on a freeway, all of a sudden, you're on a two-lane road, we put the little curves in, as Patrick mentioned, to slow you down, but to help get in the driver's mind, there's that reminder of, you're going 34 miles an hour, you need to slow down more. So, we have those tools, we've used them just recently, they absolutely seem to work, especially on those rural areas where people have been driving a long ways before they're in, all of a sudden, they're entering a roundabout that they weren't prepared for.
Dave?
Can we move to the public comment?
Soon as we're done here, you bet. Bart, thank you. My apologies, it's taken a little longer. I wanted to make sure that all of the audience had the benefit of what council has heard up to this point as well. So, at this point, I will open the floor to members of the public that have questions or would like to make comments. I would ask, if you would, please keep your comments to about two minutes or under, so that we can get around to everybody. Okay? Good evening, Harvey. If we could get your name and address.
A quick comment on what I said earlier at the workshop. Please do not make a decision on roundabouts until you get a total accident picture for the last five years at both intersections, and I have- And I have sent to the Collision Data Center in Olympia for that information. I will share it with the council when I get it from, on my email. Everybody talks about roundabouts. Nobody talks about accidents. My experience as a Seattle police officer investigating vehicle collisions and as the safety officer at, for the police department, reviewing vehicle accidents that police officers were involved in, required knowledge of the RCW traffic laws. One of these laws is RCW 4704.010 that defines an intersection as any place where traffic merges or crosses, or where two or more roadways come together, not necessarily crossing, such as a T-intersection, which is directly opposite the south doorway here. That's a T-intersection. A cross-intersection is where one road goes up and the other one crosses. Then you have offset intersections, and others, including roundabouts. RCW 4661180 says, "A roundabout is an intersection control device with traffic circulating around an island." In investigating an accident, when you have a variety of laws, RCW laws, in a roundabout, you would have to have knowledge of intersection law. You would have to have knowledge of signaling, yield right-of-way signs, negligent driving, speeding, and following too close, amongst others. So an investigator...
Harvey, I need you to wrap up, please.
I'll sure try, Mr. Mayor.
No, I need you to wrap up.
Well, I could come up with a lot of scenarios on the types of accidents, but it boils down to an investigator has so many laws that conflict in investigating a roundabout accident that chances are, if two or more people are wrong, he would cite everybody and let the judge figure it out.
Thank you, Harvey. Larry?
My name's Larry White, 2327 North O Street. Originally, when this was brought up about 10 years ago, I resisted it. I was against it. Since that time, I've looked into it, and I'm in support of the roundabouts. I've also had the chance to use the roundabouts. And the first thing that made me comfortable was, is I didn't have to look two directions and then recheck this way again, and, you know, just keep checking both ways. I just have to look once, one direction, and if it's clear, I continue to go. If it's not clear, I have to pause or slow my speed till that car goes by. Once in a while, I have to stop. So that's one of the... I wanted to bring that up. So, you know, a lot of times, people should maybe just be open to it a little bit, to looking into it. Before I looked into it, I was opposed to it. Once I looked into it, I was for it. The other thing I wanted to bring up, and just make sure that everybody heard that, is that the chance of a high-speed, 55, 60 mile an hour to the passenger door, driver's door, T-bone accident from a left turn violation or a red light being run is practically not going to happen. So if there is an accident, it's going to be cars colliding at an angular, probably angular, and at low speed. Also, it would remove the situation that we have now, where traffic backs up at the red light. That light needs to be removed, some way or another. So traffic backs up that light, and then there could be rear-end collisions. At 32nd Street, there was an accident about a year ago, maybe a little longer, where someone was making a left turn off of 14 onto 32nd, and there was a big accident there with serious injuries. So that needs to be addressed also. The other thing, if there's a, if there is a backup because of the trains, that was brought up as an objection. It's illegal to block an intersection. So, and people now, if they're in that left turn lane or backed up on 14, they don't have any choice. There's nothing they can do. With the roundabout, people should not be backing up into that roundabout. That would be illegal. But you would have the choice of going straight on up 14 and getting off and going through the port and coming back through town, or make it going all the way around and going back down west, or the other way, back towards the overpass, over town. So you'd have some choices. And then, finally, I just wanted somebody to address bicycle safety. There is occasionally bicycles that run down the 14, and I'm done.
Thank you, Larry. Good evening, Bill.
Bill Dergan, 22113th Street, Washougal. And not opposed to changes. My mom died out on Highway 14. I'm okay with some changes. My nephew died down by Hamilton. Hamilton's that intersection there on Highway 14. What they've got there now, I like better than what was there. I don't like roundabouts though, but I like it better than what there was. Still, I'm not in favor of it, but it's better. Do I see that same thing going with right here at those two intersections? Not really. And there's already, what he was just saying, you could go a different way. You can already do that. So I don't know, it's saying, putting in a roundabout, and if you don't like it, go a different way actually works. I don't actually think a roundabout, those two intersections work. I think they're far too busy for that. There's a lot of things going on with that that I'm not going to be able to say in two minutes. Just coming right out and saying there's not enough money to do it any other way, I don't see that as coming in with a positive attitude. The three-legged roundabouts that we were getting shown, a lot different than those two intersections, to me. I've been on some of those. I've been on a lot of them. I've been a lot of places. I'm a CDL driver. Most of the CDL drivers around here don't like any of those roundabouts, any of them. That's why those dump trucks were going a different way instead of going through town, because they didn't like them. It's not that they had to change their route because now there was a roundabout. They didn't like dealing with them, so they chose to go around them. This 27th, that's not a bad option. To me, that's the only one, although I'd hate to see more traffic going right there. You're going to have a lot more people going up and going past the school. But it's better than a roundabout there or there. Just is. That's just my opinion. Bicycle speed, if you want everybody to go at bicycle speed, why are we going to call it a highway anymore? Why don't we just call it the Washougal Bike Path? Get down, get down to it. Bicycles only from Washougal up. You want everybody to do 15, 20 miles an hour on this Highway 14? Existing Safeways, somebody mentioned that, and how when you come out of there, you just look and go. All the exits out of that Safeway are 90-degree. Anybody that pulls out of there without looking and stopping, it was your choice to get hit. You know? That's ridiculous to even think people are doing that. It's more ridiculous if they do it.
I need you to wrap up, Bill.
Okay, continuous streams, 32nd Avenue or 32nd Street. If you're going off that roundabout, you're going to have a continuous stream of people going around there. That's, it is still going to back up. You're going to have the train come across. It's going to back up. You're not stopping that by putting in a roundabout.
Thanks, Bill.
Overpass down there would be nice. See ya.
Thank you. Good evening.
Andrew Schlow, 1310 North 24th Court. I currently live right off the Washougal River Road, just, I guess, north of the bridge, by Shepherd, right across from Shepherd. And we get that annual fun event called motocross that nobody has mentioned once, that already backs traffic up where I cannot leave my neighborhood. And I'm kind of curious how this is going to affect motocross and everybody's giant rigs. Like the gentleman just said, that, you know, they drive their big trucks and take them all the way up the Washougal River Road on those two days going in and out, and how that's going to affect my ability to leave my neighborhood, because there's only two exits, and it's Washougal River Road South, Washougal River Road North. And I just, I just don't know how a roundabout's going to really do much, much good when you literally have to stop before you can turn anyways with what we have right now. So maybe I'm young. I know I'm probably the youngest person here tonight, besides our student rep, 29 years old right now, but, and I haven't seen a lot. I just don't see anything wrong right now. I mean, there was the accident last year, but I've been in Washougal for 15 years, and I haven't heard of very many deadly accidents beyond the one on 32nd and what we have north of 32nd up by the Stegerwald Lake. So I just want to make sure those things are mentioned, because I haven't heard anybody mention one thing about motocross, and that's kind of a big deal already that we have in place that's not being fixed. So, thank you.
You bet. Thanks, Andrew. Good evening, Courtney.
Hi, how are you? I'm Courtney Wilkinson, 5242 I Street, and I am your president of the Downtown Washougal Association. We, I'll be brief. We want to support the funds to be shifted from the overpass to the SR-14 corridor. We were briefed by Mitch at our board meeting, and we feel that the impact on downtown will be positive. We also feel that there's been lots of studies done for the safety and traffic flow improvement. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Good evening.
Jim Tillman, 1412 I Street. This 50-year project out here that we're talking about was supposed to be taken care of long ago. You know, this road, the roadbed was all put in 50 years ago, and nothing has gotten done, because the money gets diverted to the state, just the port, you know, up around the Puget Sound area, for the most part. I've listened to all the arguments, and a couple of things that haven't been brought up to my satisfaction, I guess, is the fact that Highway 14 is the only, for intensive purposes, sea-level pass to the east side of the state. It doesn't go over a mountain pass and get affected in the wintertime as badly as the rest of the passes do. So that's, I mean, there's a lot of truck traffic on that road. I agree with Bill on that, that the roundabouts really don't work that way. The other thing that I'm seeing is, is we divert the money to the roundabouts or to even the 27th Street. I think the 27th Street option is probably the best option, or 86th, the rest of ramps, period. But how, I mean, we're going to increase our urban growth boundaries. We're going to build more houses. We're going to put in more subdivisions. Well, they're not going to be south of the railroad tracks. There's no way, there's no place to build that many houses south of the railroad tracks. So how are all of these new residents going to get home when the trains go through? We're not going to have less trains. They're not going away. You know? So I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jim. You make a good point. That's still something that we've got to address. Good evening, Dave.
Good evening, council. David Ripp, Executive Director for the Port of Canis, Washougal. I just want to reiterate what David Scott had said earlier at our last meeting last Tuesday. The commission voted to support having that money shifted. The main reason for us is the cost savings and the timing. I mean, it looks, as Bart had said, the timing, or even the possibility of being able to do what has been discussed earlier on, when the, when the port and the city partnered and looking at trying to do some improvements there in 2012, is not financially feasible. And the importance of that project, to be able to do that would not basically happen. So I think this is a good scenario for us. I mean, I support it as a port because of the fact, safety being number one, and access in and out of our industrial area. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, again.
Anna Janczuk, 30107 Southeast 23rd Street. I am in support of the roundabouts and the transfer of the money to that project. As a person who's traveled all over the world, traveled on roundabouts in many different countries, they work. And I want to remind everybody, it's the people and the way they drive, not the roundabouts, that are creating the problem. And speaking to the different factors that slow traffic as they come in and continue that slowing of traffic as it approaches a second roundabout would serve to help any issues in regards to safety and accidents.
Thank you, Anna. Larry? Oh, Wes? Nope, come on up. Good evening, Wes.
Good evening. Wes Hickey, 1700 Main Street, Washougal. I'm in favor of the roundabouts. We've had conversation recently about creating certainty, about ready aim. A lot of the issues we're dealing with, there was a lot of discussion took place 2005, 2006. A lot of the same questions go around the loop, and that's how we got to this solution today. Look at that map. There's a lot of talk, well, we can do frontage roads. We can do off-ramps. There's a lot of wetlands. There's a lot of environmental habitat area. There's some area that flows into the Columbia River. That's going to make that incredibly complicated. Additionally, it's $100 million. I brought some statistics, just Bart mentioned earlier, but if you think you're going to get that $100 million, miles driven peaked in this country in 2004. Between 2011, '14, percentage of Americans with a driver's license fell in every age. Among 16- to 44-year-olds, percentage has declined continuously since '83. To get our roads in good state of repair, right now, we would need to triple the annual money spent on road repair for the next 20 years. From 2009 to 2011, states spent 56% of their highway budgets building new roads and adding lanes. That managed to increase capacity by 1%. Despite the capacity during that time, vehicle miles remained stable. Congestion increased. We're a small community. We've got limited capital. We're going to have to be smart in how we spend that capital. The better we do with that, the better chance we're going to have success. And the last thing is, constantly, we refer to ourselves as the gateway to the gorge. I was watching a branding video recently, and they say, "Gateway is a place you pass through to get to somewhere else." Maybe we should have a gateway to Washougal. Thank you.
That's a good point. Thank you, Wes. Good evening, Larry.
Good evening, council and mayor. Larry Keister, 4402 Zitzelberger Road, Washougal. I'd like to address the economic benefits to Washougal and the Port Industrial Park. Truck traffic leaving the industrial park heading west must travel through city streets and around numerous blocks to head to the east. This is not efficient to the trucker in fuel and in time. A quick, an easy, quick access to the industrial park makes that property more valuable. Washougal is developing its downtown area. The port is developing its parks, its trails, and its retail property. Travelers going 60 miles an hour will have little time to see what our community has to offer and be willing to stop. Slowing to 25 to 30 miles an hour will give them an opportunity to see all that we have to offer. Stop for lunch, for dinner, shop in our stores, buy gas, and leave a little money in our community. I urge you to redirect the money to the project that is, has a possibility to be completed because we can afford it and continue developing Highway 14 to benefit our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Good evening, Charlie.
Good evening. Charlie Bishop, representing Pendleton Wool Mills at 2 Pendleton Way. Pendleton Wool Mills is supportive of shifting the funding to the roundabouts at 15th and 32nd Street as a safe, efficient, and very practical way of getting our employees, our customers, our truck traffic, and everyone else in the community on and off Highway 14. We're also very supportive of any efforts to look at providing access at 27th Street as a way to support the downtown and the growth in both housing and employment opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Richard? Good evening.
Richard Hamby, 37015 Southeast Gibson Road. Just some thoughts about what I see as the disadvantages and advantages of this proposal to transfer the funds from 27th Street overpass to the highway corridor. Disadvantages, it doesn't, it doesn't get you across the railroad tracks. you across the railroad tracks. And I think it's been discussed that there's a good chance that this money won't get us across there anyway and it'll go away. But, but that'll remain an issue. Another disadvantage, and some of the people have talked about it, is this, roundabouts that are proposed, it can be confusing to people that aren't familiar with roundabouts. I think that's something that changes over time in our own community. We've got something to deal with now and people have become used to that. And it makes me think of four-way stops, not that we're talking about four-way stops out on the highway. Now, that's a really complex thing to try and figure out and people all the time fail to figure out what to do at a four-way stop. They can really figure out roundabouts once they've done a couple of them. And another disadvantage, it slows the highway traffic. I live out east of town, so many, many times I'm driving right on through and I kind of looked at the math. Maybe it's going to cut a minute off of my drive time. But, that's assuming the light's green. And if the light's red, it's probably, might save me time overall. So, then, I've got, thought of quite a few, actual advantages. The first one that comes to mind is that it slows highway traffic. And I think that was one of the big reasons why it was 10 years ago proposed and was essentially for spurring economic development. Another advantage is the obvious cost savings. I think we were talking about 10 times as much money to do the corridor with interchanges. And because of that, the fact that we might be able to get something soon out of this. Another advantage, it's really going to be much safer than the current situation. Another one, it's going to provide better access to the industrial park than either the current situation or the city's current proposed $100 million plan. It's going to provide better access to the community than the current situation or the proposed $100 million plan. It's going to support, as people maybe mentioned a couple of times here, it's better support Washtugle's position as the gateway to the gorge. And it will work just fine if we get a grade-separated crossing at 27th or 32nd and it allows us to have time to have that discussion and make a good decision there. And one last thing, it avoids the scenario of maybe getting a grade-separated crossing at 27th and never getting anything changed out on the highway. And we'd have that very circuitous traffic pattern that nobody really planned that we might be stuck with. So, thanks.
Thank you, Richard.
Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is Rod Morris, 4050 Addy Street. 10 years ago, I was on council when Bart came to us and we started talking about it. We recognized that at that time, we needed a safety corridor through here. We knew about all the wrecks. And at that time, I don't believe that roundabouts had come to fruition like they have 10 years later. And so, now we see the benefits of them. We actually talked about that roundabout 10 years ago and it was calmly put down. But, anyway, I want to hope to see this change. I hope to see you move that money over. And I also want to state that anything that, for the last 35 years, I've been a volunteer fireman and I've been to most accidents on Highway 14 that have happened. And so, anything that can happen here that will change that and slow those motor vehicle accidents down, I'm in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod. Alex, come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Alex Yost. I live at 2131 Main Street. And I know Courtney spoke on behalf of the Downtown Association, but I own a business downtown. Will have been there for three years this spring, seen a lot of changes, a lot of good things happen in this, in our community. So, I just want to speak as a business owner. I also, you know my address now, so I live downtown too. And I think I, I fully support the roundabouts. I think, on a personal note, it's really, really, really beautiful right there and I don't mind that I get stopped there. I don't mind that I have to do. I mean, if I'm driving at 17 miles an hour, making the left-hand turn, and there's the beautiful statue that represents our community, if there's advertising for businesses, that's good for me too. And then there's a mountain and then there's the gorge. And I really think that would be an excellent way to welcome people, even if you already live in this community, just take a moment and appreciate the beauty and the awesomeness that is Washtugle. So, roundabouts.
Thank you, Alex. Anyone else that would like to comment? Last chance.
Todd Verdié, 36105 Northeast Washtugle River Road. Been around here for a long time. I support the roundabouts, I guess, but I would follow up this guy right here. You're essentially going to make them more efficient to get to the railroad tracks. And then they're going to back up for probably miles as a, I don't know how long these trains are going to be. Let's say they're two miles long and they're moving relatively slowly. You're talking about multiple tens of minutes. And therefore, it's, you know, like being in the military. It's hurry up and wait. And it seems to me, you've got to solve the over-the-railroad thing first. And last thing I'd like to mention, I think we ought to have a regional or a county surtax on fuels because if fuels are going down, it will be less impactful on people to buy a gallon. And then you use it locally for the transportation projects. I'm just talking about Clark County. I know that that would make us fight Vancouver or something, but anyway, that's what I have to say.
Todd, thank you. Anyone else? Last chance again. Okay. Council. Brent?
I true have driven in Europe and roundabouts aren't the panacea. I've seen them fail. I've seen them work. I remember missing a flight back to London and Lisbon once because of a roundabout completely shut down. But, I don't, Washtugle does not have the population of Lisbon. I've seen them work in other places. They work in the Netherlands pretty well. I've driven there quite a bit. It comes down to a choice between, would I rather have, from what I'm hearing from staff, it seems unlikely we're going to be able to piece together the financing for an overpass at 27th. And I'm sure we should even do that. So, it comes down to a choice of would I rather see roundabouts or not see them on 14 compared to what we have now. And I think, listening to the experts that we have from WashDOT and our own staff, I think the choice is yes, we probably should go this way.
Michelle?
I'm definitely in favor of transferring the money because there may not be any money if we let it sit there and this project goes unfunded. And we've discovered that there's a great likelihood of that. The only way to back a bond was to have a car tax, basically, which we don't think was very popular, or a vehicle tax, sorry. So, that was the only way, we were told, that we would even be able to get a bond to fund the other portion of the money. So, I'd much rather see us keep the money in our community than lose the money. And then the apparent safety benefits and economic benefits that our community will have with this roundabout, I think it's a great thing for our community. So, I'm fully in support of it.
Paul?
I move, we authorize the mayor to request that the legislature redirect the 7.5 million appropriation from the 27th Street Overpass Project to the SR14 Washtugle Corridor Project.
Second.
Second.
I've got a motion and multiple seconds to authorize the mayor to request that the legislature redirect the 7.5 million appropriation for the 27th Street Overpass Project to the Washtugle, SR14 Washtugle Corridor Project.
And that, that said, I second everything that Michelle said.
Council discussion. David?
I think your motion was premature. We were coming up the line here, getting people's opinions on this. I'd like to express mine. I'm willing to support the mayor's attempts to get the money redirected. I'd like to hold off on the decision about what we do with it until we can discuss it with the staff a little bit. I'm not totally in favor of the 27th halftime and intersection because of the problems that were brought up here tonight. On the other hand, I'm certainly not in favor of the two roundabouts at 32nd and 15th because many of the problems that were brought up here tonight. So, I'd like to kick that one around a bit. I understand the pull of, the attraction of 7.5 million dollars that comes from outside the community. The state of, residents of the state of Washington are sharing that money with us. Part of it's our money, part of it's their money. That's a big share. I wouldn't like to give that up unnecessarily. On the other hand, I'd like to hear a little bit more from people in this community. And I would ask, is there a way to get quick input from large numbers of people here? Maybe through our website?
We could certainly attempt it. I think the question right now is trying to do, if the council is in favor of doing something such as moving the funds from the project that it's attached to now, we're up against a clock that we don't know what time it is on the clock. We've been asking our legislators when, when a supplemental budget is going to be brought up in this session. And so far, they haven't heard a date. So, it's just a question of getting, again, if council's in favor of requesting to have the, the funds moved, getting that in front of them before that happens. That's, that's the action that that would be taken up and in part of.
Is it possible at this point to amend the motion on the floor?
You can certainly make a motion to amend.
I would propose an amendment to authorize the mayor to proposition the state to get them to move the funds from the 27th Street Overpass to another solution of the SR14 problem without being specific about the approach that we're going to take.
Okay. I think you've got that ability currently still. The motion that we've got is just to reappropriate the funds to the Highway 14 corridor. I don't know that even at the state level, other than general descriptions of what we're looking at, they're asking for any detail of what that may be.
I can live with moving the, the project from the 27th Street Overpass to the SR14 corridor. That wasn't my understanding of the motion that was made.
No, that is exactly the motion. I, I read it from the packet. And to take the last piece, it just says redirect the appropriation from 27th Street Overpass Project to the SR14 Washtugle Corridor Project, period. I can live with that.
Okay. Other council discussion, comments, questions? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to request that the legislature redirect the 7.5 million appropriation from the 27th Street Overpass Project to the SR14 Washtugle Corridor Project. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. For the members of the audience that are here, thank you very much for taking the time to be here and to listen to the presentations and also make comment to the council. I think this was an excellent opportunity for, for public input that will go towards a number of questions still to be had for us. So, thank you very much. We do still have a public hearing to do this evening. I would suggest that we maybe take five minutes for a quick break and then we will come back to that public hearing at 9:05. And that is the last item that we have on the agenda. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started. This is a public hearing in regards to the Northwest Urban Growth Area Development Moratorium, Agenda Bill 7-16. Mitch, good evening.
Good evening. Still evening. I wanted to talk a little bit, just to get everybody up to speed about the annexation. And so, we all know the, what we did there. The annexation was approved by council on November 16th, 2015. It was official, made official on January 22nd, so last Friday. And it did put in effect a six-month moratorium on the Employment Center portion of property. So, on to the development moratorium. The Community Development Committee discussed this at their December meeting. And then we brought that back to council. Staff brought that to council on January 11th for discussion. And there was a draft moratorium ordinance within your packet. I did make one change to the one from the 11th to tonight's, and that was to allow permits for existing residential structures. So, in terms of area, most everybody's familiar with what we're dealing with here, but for the record, you'll notice that our map is shaded differently now because the annexation is in effect. So, that, all that darker gray is now within the city of Washtugle. This is the portion that's now under the existing zoning moratorium for Employment Center. And then this is the proposed development moratorium area. So, the recommended action is to hold a public hearing, to take public testimony. Council desires, make a motion to read the ordinance by title only and pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing and ask any members of the public that would like to speak to the issue to please step forward to the microphone, give your name and address and your testimony. Good evening, Larry.
Hi, Larry. Thank you. Larry Landgraver, 29513 Southeast 33rd Street, Washtugle. I, we live up on Woodward Hill. And I just, a couple of things I want to say is that if, I appreciate the fact you guys are looking at re-zoning this property or looking at doing some residential here rather than an employment center that you have up there. It's really a beautiful place that we have. And it'd be nice to have possibly a little larger lots up there if you're going to zone, just to consider this, instead of looking out and seeing rows of roofs when you look out across the hill, to actually see some homes and possibly a little greenery and a little more area out there. I think it'd be really nice for our area. It's a beautiful place and, and we have a lot going on up there with, with the views and everything. The other question I had is somebody might be able to answer for me on, on a critical area. You have some areas that are shaded that are critical areas. And is that area that are going to be buildable? I assume they are from what I've read, that there is just not going to be anything that would be where there'd be a residential development or anything. Our children have a five-acre parcel north of us. They plan to build on it. So, is there anything that we need to know about that?
Well, in terms of, it depends on what the critical area is. And typically, up there, it's slopes, it's geological. And what it requires is greater study by a geotechnical engineer. But typically, we allow construction on slopes.
Okay. I know it's approved, so I don't know. Maybe by the time they build, you'll have stores and everything. It depends on what, what's going to happen. So, we'll wait and see, but.
There's no creek through that ravine that's over there?
I don't know of any creek up.
Even seasonal one, I don't know of.
Not up there. I know there's springs, I think, south and to the east, but not here.
There's a few springs, but there's not really a lot of, there are no creeks up there. Okay, so, all right. Thank you.
Brent, thanks, Larry. Anyone else that would like to speak to the item? Good evening, John.
Good evening, John Spencer, 2103 Southeast 303 Washtugle. I too want to thank you for all the efforts you've made hiring the consulting firm and looking at this in further detail. We, we of the neighborhood greatly appreciate you taking the time and effort. Urge you to establish the moratorium. The potential damage to property owners is pretty slight. It's, well, it's a six-month moratorium, I believe, so fairly short delay. Potential for properly studying the issues and getting it right is much larger with a moratorium. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. Good evening again. I think this is a record.
Stated again?
I think this is a record.
Where is she? She has the detail. Anna Yanczek speaking again. As a property owner up here, I'm to the east of the area that you're speaking of about, but I do support the moratorium. but I do support the moratorium. And I would like to restate that the last time I spoke about this, I think it's a good mixed-use residential, love to see it be that. There is potential, I think, for some Employment Center in regards to centers for sports and health activities similar to, and I think I mentioned before, the Lackamas Swim and Sport. As population increases up there, you've got Woodburn Hill School, and as with Lackamas Swim and Sport, you know, you have houses all around that, you've got different-sized properties. It's a highly-used and desirable area, and I think we have an opportunity to create something similar in this region.
Thank you very much.
My name is Robert Ennis, and I live at 428 West Dogwood Street, which is just south of the moratorium area. I think the moratorium is a very good idea. It seems to me that there's a great opportunity for larger lots because of the excellent view people will have on the top and the south edge to the top of the hill. You could get some very high-value residences there, but you'll need a little larger lot than the usual zoning, so the time will give up an opportunity to study all that and figure out the optimum setup. I can't help, as a member of Lackamas Swim Club, yeah, I think it'd be great if we had one right there so we didn't have to drive all the way over to Lackamas all the time. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Chris Trotter. I own a raw piece of property there, so I don't have an address to give you, but it is in the yellow area. Larry Landgraver is my father-in-law. I came from a high-density area in Seattle, and I saw growth throughout my childhood with irresponsible zoning. And I know what we're talking about is a moratorium, but I also want the council to keep in mind, as we move through the legislative process and as the years go on, that having responsible zoning and thinking about infrastructure and understanding what it means for those of us that do own property there and have lived there for a number of years, or in my wife's case, grew up there on these pieces of property, ensuring that it lasts, not only our generation, but for future generations, and understanding what, again, that infrastructure and, albeit high-density, has a great tax benefit for everybody involved, it's always, or not always, but it's not necessarily the responsible and right decision going forward in these large tracts of land.
Good evening, Ken.
Ken Aviti, 2413 Southeast 283rd. Just moving forward with development in this area, I just encourage the city of Waschugle to just considering, you know, traffic impacts, sewer water, especially, infrastructure. So far, Camas kind of has a head start in the infrastructure up Crown Road, so if we could look at, you know, some sort of a joint use agreement with the city of Camas, I would highly encourage that, or taking a look at that availability, and just ask that be cautious in looking at development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brett Simpson, 3206 Southeast McKeever Road. You know, I spoke at the workshop, and I'd just like to reiterate that, I guess, one of the things I've been seeing is there's a lot of subjective comments or anxieties, and it, just from the words used, it makes me think that people have a misunderstanding of what that zoning allows or requires. I'm hearing a lot of high-density, it's actually low-density residential, significantly larger lots than everything that's taken place south of there. You already have smaller lots to the north of this area that you're talking about, so your comprehensive plan, too, when they go and evaluate that, and it'll remain urban low, they most likely won't go in and say it's going to be R175, R110, R115. They'll simply designate it as a comprehensive plan zone, I believe, right? So they say urban low, urban medium, urban high. You're already at the least impactful level of residential usage there. And it does have a significant impact on people, even at six months. There's a number of people with properties to the east of us who want to sell their homes and retire, and it's in a state of flux where they can't go either way. People don't want to buy it as a single-family home on five acres because it's developable land, and they can't sell to the developer because developers don't want it when they don't know what's going to happen with it. So you put a number of families and stuff in flux with this moratorium, and it kind of results in no real net benefit. The last thing I'd like to say is I agree with the, you know, Camas-Washugle joint agreement for the utilities. For the record, I don't need it. I have other means of utilities for my property, but from an engineering standpoint, from redundancy of infrastructure cost, everything goes with it, it makes a lot of sense. They also have the best positioning through southeast Crown Road to service not just the area right now, but the area up the way, so avoiding pump stations and, you know, generators and all the redundant stuff that you would need to pump sewage up over the mountain is pretty, pretty good for the long term, so, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good evening, Rod.
Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is Rod Morris, 4050 Addy Street.
Mitch, what, just in a nutshell, why would we annex and then put a moratorium on it? I haven't been in the workshops and that thing, but refresh our memory, would you?
Well, it's a very long process that we went down, and a very long path. We had started the annexation process, we had Employment Center land, we knew that we had to develop those regulations for Employment Center. We went off to the Planning Commission to develop those regulations. It was at that time that we got a lot of input from neighbors who were very concerned about the Employment Center designation and did not want to see that for one, and then also concerned about the regulations themselves. We brought that back to council. Council heard, again, that testimony from those parties, and it was, and one thing that council asked at that time was the, a financial, you know, kind of, what's the word I'm looking for? Statement, if you will, about the annexation and the cost and benefits to the city related to that. It was at that time that we made the suggestion that maybe we should look at doing kind of a land use study, and look at our employment needs, see, because we, council was, there was a discussion about whether or not we needed all that blue, if you will, on the map. And so we went into that process, we entered into a PSA with Berger to look at that. They actually just reported earlier this evening at the workshop on those employment land needs, and we need more visioning and outreach that we're going to do as part of that process. And so I think what the Community Development Committee was looking at was, we should not let development just go out of the chute until we finish that visioning process because the colors on the map most likely will change.
So it's not a... I was wondering if it was a zoning issue, and to some degree it is then, right? Because of the development issues that would come along with that. Now, the Economic Center, though, what had me concerned about that was it wasn't 184 acres or something, so why you went that larger portion is the other question that I have.
Why it was larger and...
The Economic Center to the west, over near Crown Road?
Yeah, actually, the entire north portion, all of this area, and even further off our map there.
Oh, clear to the east.
Yes, yeah, all the way to the east was Employment Center. And again, that's why council had the discussion of, do we need all that color? We went up.
And I thought that Economic Center, when the last time that I saw those areas up there, that that was a, just in that far northwest corner, and so that, as long as it goes the other way, that makes sense now.
Yes.
So, thank you. Thanks, Rod. Anybody else that would like to speak to the moratorium? Good evening.
Hi, my name is Deidre DeBoever, 29231 Southeast 23rd Street. We appreciate being involved, that the study got input from us about the overall objectives of the study, and it looks like it is pointing out some things that we suspected, especially my sister suspected, that would be true about the need for the Employment Center area, in that area especially. And so it looks like you're on a good path, and hopefully you're not going to just adopt a motion that would just accept it for what it is right now and move forward with it. I'm pretty confident that you're not going to do that. I'm hoping that if there is a moratorium, it's not going to drag out forever. This process has gone on a long time, and at the last meeting, we heard, you know, six months, maybe another six months after that. I just don't think that's acceptable. We need to wrap this thing up and move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Any other comments? Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that the ordinance be read by title only.
There are no objections, so ordered.
An ordinance adopting a six-month development moratorium for all residentially zoned property annexed under ordinance number 1783, identified in the attached exhibit A.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
I've got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. Council discussion. David?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, if I understand this, we've got a moratorium on the residential as well as the commercial portion of the area.
You don't yet, this would put a moratorium on the residential.
On the residential only?
Yes. We already have a moratorium on the Employment Center area.
I heard something tonight that intrigued me. Are we seriously considering creating five-acre plots up there?
No idea. That hasn't been discussed. We haven't, yeah, we haven't talked about that at all.
Because if we were, I'd support it. But the other thing is, this is a six-month moratorium, right?
As it is proposed right now, correct.
Yes. That clarifies what I need to know. I will support this, Mr. Mayor.
Paul?
Question of the city attorney, as a matter of law, six months is the duration of the moratorium. We could renew it, but we can't make one longer than that out to start correcting. And that six months would in fact give us an opportunity to think about larger minimum lot sizes in this area, correct?
Give you time to deal with every...
Thank you. I just want to make sure, this moratorium is for six months?
Yes. Unless we wrap it up earlier, can always do that.
Oh, I love the way you say it.
I think, I think staff and the consultants have heard fairly clearly that we want this done sooner than later, so. Any other questions, comments? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, with that, it brings us back to the third, fourth, fifth, or sixth opportunity this evening for public comments, if anyone would like to make comment to council. Okay, not hearing any on there. On mayor's report, I have a couple of items for you. Two of them are appointments to city committees. I believe you received this late last week and then copies this evening as well. I have a recommendation to appoint Mr. Jeff Olson to the City Planning Commission, and Mr. Olson is here this evening. Was he? Oh, yeah, there he is. I would certainly entertain a motion for that appointment.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second?
I've got a motion and a second to affirm the appointment of Jeff Olson to the City Planning Commission. Any questions, comments?
Normally, I like to see these a little bit in advance, but as I understand it from Mitch, we haven't had an application to join this august body in quite some time, and I don't want this one to get away, so I'm going to vote in favor of this, regardless of the fact this is the first time I've seen it.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to affirm the appointment of Jeff Olson to the City Planning Commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The second appointment that I have is Mrs. Shirley Frosh to the Cemetery Board. Mrs. Frosh was here earlier. She was so kind to sit through all the other discussions, but I would ask for a motion to affirm that appointment as well. So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to affirm the appointment of Shirley Frosh to the City Cemetery Board. Any council discussion? David?
I noticed she's been a resident in Waschugle for 83 years. I can't think of anybody better to sit on the cemetery board.
There you go. Any other comments, questions? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to affirm the appointment of Shirley Frosh to the City Cemetery Board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Really, the only other items that I have for you are in regards to the AWC meetings this week up in Olympia. I think you've all received copies of the appointments that have been set, the times and locations of them. We did, I think David sent out a email explaining that we have gone through and set those up and noticed those as public meetings, only from the aspect of, we likely will have more than a, more than three council members at some of those meetings. So we went ahead and just noticed all of those so that we didn't run into any problems on there. Don, if you want, afterwards, we could certainly fill you in on what happens during those, and anything exciting of which there probably won't be anything, but there you go. That's all that I've got for you. Councilmember, Brent?
Just looking forward to going to AWC. We'll see you, some of you up there.
I don't have anything.
Paul?
I also am going up to AWC. Let me see, last week, Governor Inslee was in town dedicating the funding for three major projects in Clark County, none of which were in Camas-Washugle. Other than that, that's pretty much it.
Joyce?
Nothing.
Jennifer?
Yep, I've got a couple things. C-TRAN, there's some service change discussions taking place now, talking about, you know, specifically within the city of Vancouver and small cities and what our needs are, and if we have anything specific, you know, that we'd like to bring up or talk about. Camas recently sent a letter to C-TRAN listing some things, some changes that they'd like to see, and I think I sent that to you, so you have it. Basically, I think one major thing that we might want to consider is potential bus service to the high school. C-TRAN just recently implemented a pilot program in Vancouver, giving free ridership to high school students, and it's totally a partnership between C-TRAN and the high schools that are within the pilot program right now, but they're looking to expand that to the smaller cities potentially, if we have a need for that. And so I just wanted to bring that up. I mean, we'd have to talk about that. I don't know if buses going down J Street is a good idea, and then possibly traveling south on 39th, I don't really know. So I just thought I would bring that up and ask for input because this is something that I would want to take back, you know, as a C-TRAN board member, anything that my city would like to put forward.
You bet.
So, and I have, I have one more thing.
Okay. I was just going to comment on the C-TRAN thing, but...
Oh, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, it has been a dream of mine to somehow rather connect Safeway to downtown...
to downtown, to Addy Street, to the high school, to the upper part of that hill, and if they did a route like that, especially if it was looped that didn't double back on itself, that would, that would be a huge benefit to people who, for one reason or another, can't get to Safeway or can't get downtown.
Right, right.
So, that, I, I, I think that's a great idea.
Right, well, I mean, if they consider expanding, you know, and offering free ridership to students at Wishuggah High School, you know, that's, that's something that we definitely would want to look at, is changing the route and making it easier for the kids to get on the bus, not having to come all the way down to the, the Safeway stops, because that's the closest one, I think. The second thing I wanted to ask about is, I haven't seen it on the agenda, and I know that Camas City Council passed this in December, is the Waschugle School District and the Camas School District CFPs, that's their capital facilities plans and their impact fee increases. I just have not seen that come through on any of our agendas, and so I was just curious. They submitted that on November 9th. I unfortunately wasn't at that meeting when they gave the presentation, and there's not a, a video, so I wasn't able to, to see that because I think the machine was broken or something, so there's no, there's no, no video, right? Right, Rose? Yeah, okay. So I'm just curious to know what, where we are in that, that process, and when we can expect to see that coming forward on the agenda.
You'll see, coming back forward, I've been doing some work with, with Rob and Mitch in regards to some of the other impacts that the school is also going to have in regards to the construction of the new, the new schools out of the Jemtaguard site, and then the, the ones in the transportation area as well, so we're trying to get a listing for, counsel completely, of what it is that we're going to end up paying for and what they get to pay for, so I want to make sure that that's as accurate and as complete as it can be before we bring that one back for you.
Excuse me, I don't quite understand how that affects the impact fees.
I just want to make sure that as, as you, as a group, address that question there of the affordability of those impact fees, that you have a very clear picture of everything else that you, as a city, are going to pay for in regard to those same capital facilities It's a very large number.
So roughly, what I'm concerned about is construction season is about to begin, and that means that permits are about to be pulled, which grandfather's the old impact fees, which are less than half of what's been proposed. So I, I just was curious when this might come forward.
Within the month?
Probably, I would, anything I publicly would say, the end of Edinburgh would be earliest that we would be up.
Right, because there has to be a public hearing, right? Yeah.
Yeah, why, and we don't really know, Paul, why they passed them in June and didn't, why, why, why they passed them in June and didn't bring them forth until the end of the year.
November, November 9th is when they submitted, yeah, and then Camas was able to get theirs passed, but they passed theirs on the 21st of December, so, yeah, I mean, should we, should we at least talk about the rates, the fee, the fees they're asking for, or is this something that we just have to wait until February?
We would have a discussion about the rates that, when we're cap, having the public hearing on the, on their capital facility plan, that's when we would have that discussion about rates.
Right, the problem is, I, I just haven't heard from the public.
Right.
That there's been no public hearing, so.
Does that have to go to planning commission, too, first?
It's been to planning.
Already has?
Yeah.
Okay.
But if we don't agree with the rate that the planning commission passed forward, does that then have to go back to the planning commission?
No, no, they're just advisory.
Oh, okay.
How much discretion do we have to...
Sorry?
Sorry, I'm sorry, Jennifer.
Advisory.
Sorry, I, I interrupted you, I'm sorry.
No.
How much discretion do we have to fiddle with the rates that the school district asks for?
We have total discretion.
Yeah, you have that discretion.
You can take them to zero.
Well, what would that do to our comp plan validity, then? Anyway, that, that's a, that's a question that's come up in my other job, and...
You'd probably end up, we'd end up using SEPA to mitigate all kinds of things.
It would be a mess, yeah.
I tend to agree with you, Brett, but unfortunately, this council has done that in the past. They have, they have messed with the rates and reduced them, and it's just, you know, the, the school district, both of them, have come to us, you know, with the rate that they have found that they needed to mitigate the impacts of more students, and then our city councils, past councils, have, you know, taken it upon themselves, saying, no, we don't think they need that much, and they changed the rate.
I've got, I've asked that question of the legal counsel for Evergreen School District and internally in my office, and I get inconsistent answers on that, on whether we can, you know, you know, the, the law says we have to approve them, but there are, there are all kinds of legal pitfalls if we don't, like that, that could impact the validity of our comp plan.
I, I think it, you know, we have to make adequate provisions for schools, and it's a capital facility plan that we plan for under GMA, that we don't really plan for, the school district has that and charge, and they do that, but I think that if we are not adequately funding it, because we have to talk about that under capital facility plans as well, if we're not adequately funding it, then yeah, I think you probably would be running afoul. I think then the, like I said, the next thing that you'd end up doing is mitigating somehow every project through SEPA to, to pay for impacts to schools.
It surprises me, though, that legal counselors don't agree.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I, it might be something you might want to get some guidance from MRSC or somebody on, or our city attorney.
Jeffrey, anything else?
Not on him.
David?
Very briefly, the Public Safety Committee met last Monday at 12:30 in these chambers, and one of the things we discussed was when our next meeting should be, and that's in two months, in these chambers, at 12 noon, subject to approval by the newest member.
Well, that works for me.
12 o'clock it is.
And what was the date again?
On Monday, the third Monday of the month.
Okay.
And I forgot that we put in every box the, the call statistics that the chief had given us at the meeting, so you all should have received that, when what the calls were that have been coming in. Very interesting.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Dan? Caleb? Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We are adjourned.